Good evening, friends.
And neighbors. Frank, what do I sound like?
You sound very garbled. Do I sound garbled?
No, you sound very clear.
No, you sound not clear. Check your mic.
Monica, you sound garbled. Wait, Tom, mute yourself for a second. All right, hey, Monica, can you use your mic?
It's muted.
You're good. You were echoing into Tom's mic and then coming out garbled from him as well. So it's time you got to rejoin or something, a reboot.
Oh, my. Okay, I'll reboot. I'll make it back.
We're rooting for you.
Eve? Oh, hello.
She's back.
Oh, he's so cute. Hello.
One eye down, but she's better.
Adorable. Still adorable. Linda, you agree?
I know Linda does.
Hello, Madam Manager, when you're younger.
Can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Happy birthday again.
Thank you, love. Thank you. It's a blessing to reach this milestone, I tell you. And I couldn't be happier to work with this great team and all you guys.
Looks like you had a wonderful time.
I did. Do I look a little dark? Should I turn in more lights?
It might be a good idea.
Yeah, it is a little dark.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to do a mic check for myself. I've been having issues. Can anyone hear me, please?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
You, Tom.
It's great to hear your voice.
Thank you very much.
And I guess I lost a year with COVID. I really thought you were a year younger.
Thank you, but this has been a little like, not traumatic, but it's like, damn, sixty, that's like, a little older, you know?
It's really not.
You know, I read something that Richard Gere once wrote, and it says that, that you always feel like you're as young as your heart is, like, you know, even as he got into his fifties and sixties, and I think he's almost like seventy, if not older, that he always felt like he was like eighteen or twenty. And, you know, hanging out with my girlfriend from junior high, like, we're talking about this, and we just feel like we were back in junior high or high school or college, you know? With a couple more wrinkles here and there. Hey, Commissioner Oddman?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm hot. My air conditioner just broke, and I've been trying to fix it, so that's why I'm disheveled, so.
Well, you look good with that green background. It's interesting, being up in North Carolina, the weather was really nice and cool.
Sure.
The minute that we hit, like, they cross like Palm Beach into Broward, I like, I see ninety-one degrees, and I'm like, oh, man. I did not miss the heat and the humidity.
No, it's something. It's something.
It is, but it was nice to see the palm, the palm trees, you know?
Yeah, but I bet that break was nice, getting to see some nice fall leaves.
It was really pretty. I love it. I'm addicted to like the fall colors of up in North Carolina and in that area. It's so pretty.
Yeah.
And it's still, believe it or not, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, it still hasn't peaked. It still hasn't peaked. It will peak at the end of this week and early next week. It's six fifty-nine. Michael's good at school?
He is good. He swears he's going to go take his bath in fifteen minutes.
Commissioner Davis?
Hello, I'm trying to change my background. Hold on. There we go. Welcome back, manager. Happy birthday again.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. It's great to be back. Hi, Mayor. Hey, Vice Mayor.
Good evening. I guess we could start now. All right, we have everyone here. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one City Commission Virtual Meeting. It is seven oh one. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Oddman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansborough. Assistant City Attorney Bootses.
I totally forgot to see where Tom was.
I'm here. I know Tom is too.
I'm here.
All right, awesome. Can you please bow your heads for a moment of silence? Thank you, and can you please say sort of pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, evergreen, broad, broad. May be preceded.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start first with the NPO update by Commissioner Lala.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Um, I just I put this on presentations because I wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page and that we I could let everybody know what's been happening since the last meeting. Um, as uh was indicated by our city manager at the last meeting, we were trying to do a letter to the NPO to ask about um potential for taking uh the monies that we're going to be going towards the West Dania Beach Boulevard project, the Dania Beach Bridge, and putting it towards um another project in Dania Beach. Um, as I think you all know, but maybe not, um, they do not automatically take that money and put it towards something else that we need in the city. The money goes on to the very next project on the list, which I believe goes to Pembroke High. So um in order for us to do anything, we can't just simply request that they either modify the the project or that they just give it to another Dania Beach project. What we have to do is we have to apply for another project that would go to the end of the list. Um, and there are some complications with that. I've had some conversations with people at the NPO specifically about it in ways that we might be able to um accomplish this. Unfortunately, fortunately, but unfortunately, the first hundred and ten or so projects that were approved on this list, um, they were a lot more lenient as far as the requirements. Um, any projects that have been submitted beyond that, they are a lot more strict as far as what they will allow, um, what the county will approve. So this isn't even the NPO, it's actually the county, um, as far as the uh monies that are being used for Surtex. So I have been told that we would need to use some very specific language in the letter in our request and that we are lo- more likely to get a project approved if it is involving widening of an existing road or creating a new road. Um, I would like to try to put those monies back into the same neighborhood in order to do that, but I'm not quite sure after speaking with the city manager and some other folks if there is such a project like that within the same neighborhood. Um, I do, I I would like them to continue to look and see if there is something there that we could suggest. Um, if not, we're we're going to try to look throughout the rest of the city to see if there is another project that might fit those criteria so that it's more likely to get approved as opposed to being not approved, since it was about four million dollars uh worth of monies to go towards an infrastructure project. So um if anybody has any ideas about projects, happy to hear them um or submit them to uh the city manager so that we can maybe take a look at them and see if they might be viable projects. Um, but that's kind of where we stand right now. We're going to likely get that letter out shortly. I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware so that you know what's happening with it and make you aware that we have been, um, I will, I have been uh communicating with several people about this and trying to do what we can so that we don't lose that money and we can still use it for something that's needed um within the city. So that's all.
Thank you. And next we'll have the CDBG presentation by Colin Donnelly. I don't see him as a panelist.
He'll be up momentarily.
Thank you. And while we wait on um on on Colin to come, uh, I I just want to ensure with Commissioner Llewellyn, and I know I spoke with the city manager, that um the letter that will go out this week uh will not, will be a conjunction of both the letter uh to recommend taking the the letter of support to take the bridge of the Sea Ten Canal out of the NPO projects as well as seeing if we could use them for other projects. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mayor, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Colin, I see you're on. Good evening.
Uh, yes. I'm going to share my screen. Uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, and City Staff. Uh, my name's Colin Donnelly. I'm the CIP and Grants Coordinator or Administrator for the city. Uh, this evening, I'll be giving you a brief overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program, commonly referred to as the CDBG Program. Uh, CDBG is a federally funded program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD. Uh, CDBG is administered by Broward County. Since Dania Beach's population is less than fifty thousand, we're categorized as a non-entitlement city, which means that a larger county government or larger government must administer the program on our behalf and apply for projects on our behalf. Um, you'll see from the slide, um, there are three goals of the CDBG Program. To provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities. The use of grant funds that the city gets is limited to qualified areas. Uh, and by qualified, um, they have to meet certain household incomes in certain census tracts and block groups. The census tracts must have greater than fifty percent of the households below the low and moderate income levels. Those those levels are established by HUD and they meet local area um uh income levels. You can see that I've highlighted in red the suitable living environment, which is the goal, the category of goal that the city generally applies for with its projects, and we'll see more about that later. CDBG activities. Uh, what type of activity activities can the city engage in to meet the goals of a suitable living environment? On the right side of the screen, you'll see a general list of of eligible activities. The left side is the ineligible activities. Highlighted in red, uh, you'll see the term public facilities. We'll get, we'll get into that a little bit more. Uh, the city's been very successful at the at the public facilities area. Um, and HUD describes a public facility activity as acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, or installation of public improvements or public facilities. Um, so we can look at some examples of public or public facilities, rather. Uh, as I said earlier, uh, CDBG eligible areas, um, you'll, you'll, I'm sorry. You'll see from the images, we've got road improvements, pump stations, lights, trees, playgrounds. These are all images from Dania Dania Beach, but not all have been CDBG eligible projects, but they're a fair representation of what the city can do um as a as a direct benefit to the qualified areas. There's also an area called an area-wide benefit where you can use the money for plants and studies, buildings for a specific use in parks. And we'll come to a little bit more about that later. Um, the map that you're looking at now uh is a is a city map, um, and it shows the eligible project areas. Um, as I said earlier, these these areas have to meet the fifty percent or more household criteria for low and moderate income. Um, the yellow areas depict these eligible areas. Um, and eligible areas usually follow neighborhoods like census tracts do, but not always. Um, as you can see, we've got three grouped areas. Um, on the east side, we've got the neighborhoods along Federal Highway. They also include the CRA. The CRAs, by their definition, under federal law, qualify for CDBG. And in the middle area, you've got a portion of the estates of Fort Lauderdale and those neighborhoods, the east, all the way to Bryant Road. And we'll say the area out west is those neighborhoods north of Griffin Road and those um just west of Southwest Fortieth Avenue to the to the city boundary of State Road Seven. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about the life cycle of a project. How does a project come about? And how does something get built? Uh, it it starts with a need, and you can see over here, I've put community needs, right? And and these needs are identified by the residents who live there in the eligible area. Um, these needs are conveyed to elected officials um to the administration. Um, and the administration is directed to address those needs. Um, that's communicated to staff, and then we commission studies and reports. Uh, and from there, projects are identified, plans are developed. Um, projects are then put out to bid, contracts awarded, and the and the project construction then is 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 developed and it meets a need. That's a general overview. On the on the base of any plan um is a foundation, and the foundation for us is Broward County and and the city of Dania Beach. Together, we develop the CDBG application. We develop a funding agreement. Uh, and together, we make sure we comply with HUD's rules and regulations. Uh, in front of the City Commission, you'll often see an application approving a uh an applica- a resolution approving an application, then a resolution approving the funding agreement, and then you're going to see the resolution as the result of a competitive bid to hire a contractor to do the work. Uh, what you generally don't see is the compliance with HUD rules and regulations, and that's a good thing because typically, if you hear about those, we've done something wrong, and we haven't. We've been really good with Broward County and HUD and conforming with rules and making sure we're spending the money properly. Right here, I've put together over the last twenty-five years. Um, and I'm sure we've been involved with CGP, CDBG longer than that, but this is where my record stopped. Um, the slide looks at the the projects over a quarter century. One column shows the calendar year, then the program year, the grant amount, and the type of project. We're now in the forty-seventh year, and for this forty-fourty-seventh year, we'll be doing a solar lighting project. We'll be getting a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars approximately. If you look at the numbers, the numbers do vary, and the grant amount is based upon our population, and I think that's divided up a- around the amount of money that Broward County gets, ultimately what Florida gets and what the federal government and Congress approve. So that's why those numbers fluctuate. There's money more years than others, and then it breaks down through a formula. Recently, in projects have, we've done solar lighting, street lighting projects. You can see a number of those, and you'll see the Oasis Program. Um, the O- the Oasis Program, you know, it it's in that category of creating a suitable, a suitable living environment, right? Just streets and neighborhoods by improving sidewalks, by adding crosswalks that are ADA compliant, by addressing stormwater needs, um, the brick paver driveway aprons that we've put in, improve the drainage, and and they offer excuse the pond curb appeal. It makes things look nice in the neighborhood, and the swells are improved. Uh, the Oasis Projects beautify the neighborhood by with with decorative street signs, um, with street names, and the and the projects, you know, have also included some solar lights that are streetlights and then pedestrian lights. Um, in a in a recent review of some of these CDBG Oasis Projects, we've had a direct benefit to over six hundred homes in the community. And so there's a big red star up there, and I want to talk about area-wide benefit. That was one of the categories we had talked about before. We had put in a program, uh, an application a few years ago for the wayfinding signs. It was a CRA project. It was developed out of the CRA plan. Um, that application was denied because, you know, it said it didn't offer enough benefits to the CDBG eligible folks where, you know, the signs would go. And uh the um, they allowed us to put in a new application, so we did an Oasis project. Um, so that was one, that was one area-wide project that didn't go, but if we look over here to the to the patch, two thousand and eight, um, we were, they approved our our patch application. So the structure that's out there at the patch uh was paid for with CDBG funds. It's an area-wide benefit um that, you know, provides a benefit to the residents of the Northeast in that eligible um census tract, but also uh people from the outside can come and use it. So those are two examples of area-wide benefit projects. One that didn't give a benefit and one that does. And I think if you think about street signs versus the patch building, we can, we can understand about getting direct benefit and using the money to benefit the people in those areas, which is, you know, the the point of CDBG. Um, that's all I have uh for this evening. Um, I, like I said, it would be a quick overview, and if you'd like, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. I don't see anyone with their hand up, but I have, I have a few questions, Colin. Um. So I heard you say that that one project was a CRA project. So the CRA is allowed to apply for CDBG funds?
Um, no, they're not. Uh, the city is the applicant. When I said it was a CRA project, um, when we go back to the slide, we start looking about where projects come from and community input. Um, the CRA plan talked about way uh projects and improvements like wayfinding signs. If you go into the the revised CRA plan, there are a number of projects in there. Um, so that was one that we, um, I, at at the time, I don't remember who the CRA director was, but they were talking about that project, and and we thought, well, perhaps, you know, we can use CDBG money for that because it provides a benefit in that area. Um, so CRA cannot apply. They have to go through the city, but as you can see, at least our attempt with the wayfinding signs wasn't successful, but the um bringing that building and promoting the patch was. So the CRA didn't apply for the the patch building, but they had gone through the steps of hiring the architects, developing the plans, and doing everything, and then turned it to the city. We turned that 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 design into a project and an application and got it approved by Broward County. So they would, a CRA project identify would qualify, uh, and the city would have to uh institute the application and go through the process on their behalf.
Okay, okay, and um I I guess I want to I think that the commission needs to have a conversation about Oasis and that project, if if we want to sunset that or if we want to continue to um have that program here. I mean, I like the program. I've I've heard uh throughout the years that, you know, different commissioners didn't really care for the program. Either way, it's fine with me, but I I want us to have a clear direction of what this commission currently, this current commission wants and where we are going to go with Oasis, because Oasis has benefited a lot of the different neighborhoods. It has um done a tremendous job in in uh bringing them up, and um I, it would be a shame if it if it left, but if we're going to do it, if we're going to do it every other year, we just need to have something that is consistent that we will know if that's the direction we want to go. Um, off the top of my head, I could think of a a lot of projects that we may be able to do. I know the city manager and I was talking about J A E Lee, and and she'll be speaking about that a little later on, and she'll probably touch a little bit on that um as well as like Mulligan Park, I think is is forgotten about a lot. That's the park that is behind the Walgreens on US One and Sterling Road. Um, we can possibly do some beautification out in the state of Fort Lauderdale. Uh, there's a park out west um that has a boating dock. I don't know what the park's name is off the top of my head. I I can't, is it Nature's Cove or? What did you say, Commissioner Lwella?
Dana Cove.
Dana Cove, yes. Um, that we can do some projects out there. Uh, maybe this is something that, you know, we need to sit down and and take a look, and I hate to say the word workshop because we have a million workshops, but we definitely need to uh come to a consensus together to be able to see what we want to stand behind as a commission and apply for these CDBG funds so that we are knowledgeable when we are talking to our constituents. It is something that we can be proud to stand on. Um, Vice Mayor?
All right, I'm there. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was around when they first started the Oasis Projects, and uh I thought that the uh, the projects we're doing in the road, we had the road cleanups, then we went out to do, the roads went in, they put the the paver stones in the middle of it, a crosswalk and things like that. I think I I think it really, really improved the the areas that these were put up in, and I think it's a great idea to bring it back there. The only thing I would recommend is I know that we have some, um, this year, we allocated a lot of our street funds to repair the uh speed bumps. I think that we need to take up and put that back into, I think we need to to do the Oasis Project, but I think we need to have a plan of making sure that we don't do something on a road that we get tore up again or something for the speed bumps or whatever, just to have a plan. Like you said, maybe doing something different like at the Dania um boat ramp or or Mulligan Park or or wherever you want to put it at, as long as it doesn't just across paths and we waste our time. So maybe what we need to do is have someone designated to So maybe what we need to do is have someone designated to pick out, you know, maybe every four times a year or twice a year, do we do a plan and pick a spot out? It's not going to be affected with any of our other improvements. That's all. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Luella.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar, except that I was, my recommendation would be that we just have somebody come back with a presentation to us that basically explains what areas they would recommend that we do something with and what types of projects we do in each area. Because I know there seems to be that there's a concentration of the Oasis projects in certain neighborhoods. And then other neighborhoods don't get anything. And it'd be nice to see them spread around a little bit more. And it would also be nice to see them be consistent throughout the entire city. So I would just recommend that we have somebody, whether it's Colin or somebody else, come back to us with some recommendations on some specific things.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Colin.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, next we have the lights on after school proclamation. Okay. The proclamation reads, whereas the citizens of Dania Beach are firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, supporting work families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, businesses, lead business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, family, and adults, and engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. And whereas the Florida After School Network has provided significant leadership throughout the pandemic to keep kids engaged in learning and meet in the needs of families in our community, especially those who need extra support to catch up and accelerate their learning. And whereas the lights on after school, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year in October, on October 28th, 2021, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas approximately 1.5 million children and youth in Florida are waiting right now for a spot in an after-school program, many of whom have no place to go after school. And whereas, excuse me, many after-school programs across the state are facing funding and staffing shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn their lights off. And whereas the city of Dania Beach is committed to investing in health and safety of all people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, the mayor of the city of Dania Beach, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2021, as Lights On After School Day in the city of Dania Beach, and commit our city to invest and engage, improve an after-school program and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school. Thank you. Next, we will have citizens' comments. If you aren't an attendee and you wish to address the commission, if you can please use your raise the hand tool. Once you are recognized, you have three minutes. I did see Ms. Bobby Grace. I'm going to ask her to.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, to Bobby Grace, 110 Northwest 8th Avenue in the great city of Dania Beach, Florida, to the mayor and the commission of the city of Dania Beach. I really liked the presentation concerning the Oasis project and also the CRA. What I wanted to bring forth to you is that in the last two and a half years, we have not done anything with the Oasis project. And I think this will be a good term to kind of bring that back. I also had an opportunity to ride the Dania Beach area, all 8.5 miles of it very recently. And I noticed that we have a lot of places in the city of Dania Beach that definitely need solar lights, especially out where P J Mealy's Park is and also Northwest 10th Court. As you're going down to Collins Elementary, that whole street is just dark. And I'm hoping that we will be able to implement some of this into the Oasis and to the solo lights that we're in, also the sidewalk improvements. I think this will be a plus for us. I am delighted that you are planning on bringing back Dania After Dark. It seems like we all need an uplift right now. We've been in this transition for over two years right now. We need to get back on track to make sure that everybody is in a happy place. And I think we, we are because most of us have been vaccinated. Our children are going to be vaccinated, and I think this is going to be a safe city. I watched the statistics come out today and we seem to be lower than we expected. So I imagine that very soon, the city of Dania Beach, along with other municipalities, will be opening it up, not to full capacity, but to the capacity that will be safe for all of us. And I'm praying and hoping that we will put some of the programs back in place. A lot of us have gotten to the point that we no longer want to see these four walls inside of our homes, but we want to get outside of them, do some exercise and do some things that will, will really have a quality of life that we need. Also want to bring to your attention that we are working on the activities for the annual Dr. Martin Luther King celebration in January. And as soon as we get everything together, as soon as we find out where the city of Dania Beach leaders are, we will bring something to you to tell you what we think that will be comfortable for all of the residents. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate.
Thank you. You're muted. Well, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak? Seeing as there are none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any polls? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, excuse me. Over to public safety reports.
Oh, my gosh. Look at me, going right past public safety reports. Public safety reports. Captain Mark, sorry. I'm glad that you're back. I hope you enjoyed your vacation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Since the last commission meeting, we've responded to three aggravated batteries, two auto thefts, two burglary structures, one burglary business, ten burglary conveyances, one burglary residence, one robbery by sudden snatching, one sexual battery, a total of seven thefts. And then we started tracking the theft of catalytic converters because that's the growing trend around, I want to say the country. I know it's real bad in South Florida right now, but we had four of those. Since the last commission meeting, we have had a decrease of three auto thefts, a decrease of two burglary businesses, and a decrease of one burglary residence. Also during that time, we've made 34 arrests, one of which was a grand theft and uttering a forged instrument where a suspect knowingly forged a check from her former employee in the amount of $4,500. The suspect then deposited the check into her own account. We completed a non-incusity PC and the suspect is waiting to get picked up. Our crime suppression team has conducted surveillance and apprehended a suspect involved in a Dania Beach drive-by shooting as well as a Davy homicide. If you recall, that was the one that was off of 595 in Flamingo. He was staying at one of our hotels in the city. And these LPRs, I preach about them all the time. They're such a great tool to catch and bad guys. They made three felony arrests and recovered one stolen vehicle. Our criminal investigations had the following notable arrests. At an auto theft where a suspect was arrested in Deerfield when the stolen vehicle was tracked there after having been stolen from our city. We had a criminal mischief where the victim was reversing her vehicle and knowingly, unknowingly almost hit the suspect. A verbal altercation ensued and the suspect kicked the victim's driver door, causing felony amounts of damage. Our traffic unit addressed concerns of recent local businesses complaining. We had one at the 1200 block of Sterling Road where our commercial vehicle enforcement and midnight shift continues to monitor the problem due to large trucks blocking traffic and access to the business. And so far, we've towed quite a few of them. So we'll continue that. Same with the patrol of the school zones and traffic complaints around Southeast 5th Ave. We also deployed a speed trailer at 4600 Southwest 30th Ave because we've received several complaints about people coming over the bridge heading south on 30th Ave. And it just so happens to be right in front of our station. Our homeless outreach team continued assisting a chronic homeless male, which resulted in him finally receiving social security benefits. This will allow our team to assist him in obtaining housing and transportation, which will also allow him to get a part of a full-time job. We continue to monitor the progress of a chronic homeless male who is currently hospitalized. We have been in contact with Adult Protective Services and his case manager at the hospital. This is to assure that upon his release, he enters either an assisted living facility or a nursing home and that he is not released back into the streets. Homeless Outreach helped a young female with children who was concerned about not having a place to live after she was scheduled to leave her hotel room. Financial assistance was provided, purchasing food, toiletries, and other necessities for her and her children. She was reunited with her father and will be going to stay with him along with her children when her hotel stay has ended. In closing, don't forget Friday night is Broward Sheriff's Office, Dania Beach District's National Night Out on Crime and the city of Dania Beach's Halloween Festival from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at CW Thomas Park. That completes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, fellas, I?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and our fine citizens of Dania Beach. October 1st through last night, we ran five, our units have ran 572 emergency call. Out of those 572, 114 are fire-related and 458 were medical call. Our inspections team is already at 10% completion in just the past 25 days. Our fire department has been busy continuing to do our public education with the elementary schools and preschools, sharing fire safety tips with our, with our children. We also, on October 20th, had a virtual fire safety training for seniors. So for all you seniors out there listening in this great city of Dania, please sign up for our next one. We're having one on November, December 15th. And you can find a link on the city's website. It's, as soon as you open it up, you'll see it right there. Says fire safety education for seniors. Those will be focusing on fire safety during the holidays. And they have been well-attended so far, but the better educated I can get, get you all out there, that helps do our job even better. I want to thank Linda for giving me the opportunity to meet our new CD team. And all I could say is Commissioners and City Manager, our team just keeps getting better and better. In the 32 years I've been here, this is the best team ever assembled. And like I said, we and that speaks volumes. Also, the last thing I will mention is that on November 26th and 27th, our firefighters will be doing our annual toll at Five and Below in Dania Point. And I want to thank Dania Point for their partnership and helping us put this together. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see any questions. So you have a great night.
Thank you.
Now, consent agenda. Do we have any polls?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Awesome. Bids and requests for proposals? Eight point one?
The resolution of the City Commission of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to undergroundings of the Beach Electrical Services Project under invitation to bid ITV number 21-009, authorizing a decision of resolution 2021-097 toward the ITV to High Power Inc. Due to a price increase not contemplated in the award, authorizing the award of the ITV to Unitech amount of $289,137. Authorizing the property to the contract, ready for conflicts for the providing for an effective date public services item.
Thank you. Do we have any questions about out of eight point one?
Take a motion to pass it. Public hearing.
What did you say, Vice Mayor?
It's a public hearing, isn't it?
No. It's a bid. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eight point two?
Is a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, authorizing the award of invitation to bid ITV number 21-022 reissue to Austin Trucking Inc. for the water treatment plant, lime sledgehammer, and disposal services not to exceed $200,000 in amount, which belongs to the city's limited threshold for the term of the contract for two years and two one-year renewals at the city's option. Effects for the running for an effective date, also a public services item.
Again, if we don't have any discussion, do we have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Public hearings, nine point one?
Is an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, amended chapter 12 of the city code entitled Flood Damage Prevention by creating Article 7 entitled Seawall, adopting the required standards for seawall height as mandated by Broward County by amended chapter 28 of the city intended to land at a wind code, Article 240, internal docs and wiring structure, section 240-30 entitled Seawall, to reference the required conflicts, ready for serviceability, for the providing for an effective date. Second and final reading, the development item.
Want you to approve?
Wait, 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 wait. Mr. Labor, do you want to speak on this? And it is a public hearing. And I see. All right. So I see Corinne is not, can we add Corinne? There you go. There you go, Corinne. Corinne, are you there?
Yes, I had, I'm here now.
All right. How are you?
Good. How are you? Thank you. So this is for the second reading of the seawall ordinance. We did make a presentation at the last meeting. And this is something that is required. All the coastal communities are being required to add this language by Broward County. And it essentially gives all of the residents time, and I think it goes into effect in 2035, to start implementing, raising their seawalls. So it puts everyone on notice that if they have to start doing work, that they'll be required to do that. Otherwise, they'll have to do it by 2035. This is in response to, you know, sea level rise as well.
Okay, awesome. I do know I see one, oh, I, there was a hand up. If, this is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for our guesses, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand tool. Seeing as none, do we have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Nine point two?
Is an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, amended chapter 22 of the city code of ordinances in chapters entitled Streets and Sidewalks at Article 1 entitled in general by creating section 22-7A of the city code of orders to be entitled authority of city commission, code designate roads and streets, et cetera, and leaving code section 700-115 entitled a four-year city commission to name, rename, number, or renumber roads, alleys, et cetera. Of chapter 28, right of process for the city commission, name or rename public rights of brand, ready for conflicts, ready for serviceability, ready for effective date. First reading of this ordinance by community developer.
Good evening. I do have a presentation. I'm going to try to share my screen with you. If you all can hopefully see this. Good evening. I do have a presentation. I'm going to try to share my screen with you, if you all can hopefully see this. Okay, so this is first reading of a text amendment. It is regarding our street renaming process. So what this, or text amendment is actually doing, it's two things. The first is it's relocating some of our existing enabling language regarding the city commission's ability to name streets. That section is currently in our damp land development regulations. We're taking it out of there, and we're putting it into chapter twenty-two, which is streets and sidewalks. It just seems to make more sense. And the second is the creation of these regulations for the code designations of the streets. And I'll go through that real briefly. I think I already kind of summarized this. This is where we are relocating the existing language to chapter twenty-two. I'll go on to the second point, which is the creating the regulations for the code designation of street names. And what we're doing here is just formalizing the administrative process that the city has been using for several years. It was just never codified in our land development code, so we're doing that now. So some of the administrative policies that exist include code designation only. It's not renaming. It's only code designating. It's also for local roads and streets. Of course, we're not going to try to rename state roads. It also has a review process from the Parks Recreation Community Affairs Advisory Board. So they, oops, so they get to review and make recommendation. It also requires applicable homeowners association or civic associations in the affected area to review and comment. If the request is denied, there is a two-year waiting period as well. Let's see, my little control panel is over my last point here, and then all costs are spared by the applicant, including the, the cost of renaming and ordering new street signs. But that's already part of our existing administrative program. There, there were a couple changes that we took the opportunity to make while we're codifying, and that is we're expanding the notification area from a quarter mile to a mile. We're also asking that the petition has support of fifty percent of the adjacent property owners. Today, it's only twenty percent. And finally, if, if the street is named after a person, that the person must be deceased without criminal record, fraudulent, immoral, or offensive history. And as you know, this is a, an amend, amendment to our code of ordinances, which is city law, so it does require two readings, and this is first reading tonight. So I'm available if you have any questions. I'm sorry, there is, there is a portion of this that was brought to the Planning and Zoning Board, and that portion relates to the relocation of the enabling language, because we're taking it out of the land development code, and the Planning and Zoning Board gets to make recommendations as it's applicable to the land development code. They did hear that, and they recommended approval of that relocated thing. Are there any questions this time?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Why are we deciding now to only code designate streets? I know that co-name, I'm saying code designate streets with the naming. I know that several other cities don't just co-name the streets. So what was the thought process behind this?
Well, actually, this is something that was already in the, in our administrative policy. It was something that was already a policy the city was already doing. The reason why I didn't change it, but I liked it when I was reviewing it and preparing the ordinance, is because we are a historic city. There are, we do have a lot of street, our, our eastern portion of the city is a street grid, and it's numerically based, and so to hold on to those numerical numbers just seems to make sense as well. You don't want to lose that historical grid pattern.
Okay. Um. And what is the thought process about make, allowing it to go through the Parks and Rec Board, why that board versus any other board?
You know, I don't know. It was already, that's the way it was designated, so I didn't want to change the process any, but I, I think that having that additional community, the opportunity for community input was something I, we thought was a good thing and something we wanted to maintain.
And obviously, the, the whole back and forth about the person has to be deceased. I mean, I see several street names throughout our country after people who are still living. And so why are we mandating that the person has to be deceased in order to be honored? I, I know that I've heard all of the different arguments of what if this person does a crime and all these other things. But is that, is, are we thinking about crime the reason why we want to wait till someone's dead before we honor them?
Well, it's, I understand. So it's a policy that a lot of other cities are using. It's something that is already in our policy that we were supposed to be implementing, and you're right, the idea behind that is, you know, sometimes you don't find out about somebody until after they're gone, or their life is not yet over, and there's still opportunities for something to happen. So it's really more of a policy for, for you, how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't like that one. I, I see a lot of, I go through different neighborhoods, and I see a lot of Barack Obama street signs, and I see a lot of different street signs. I know they are naming some street signs, I think at the county level now. I can understand the other two, but that's the only one that I'm, I'm really not in favor of. But I'll leave it up to the rest of the Commissioners. I see, I see Mrs. Ottman. Go ahead.
My question was regarding the criminal history. Do we differentiate between misdemeanor and felony criminal history?
So I believe the way it's written now, it would not, but we could add that differentiation if, if desired.
Um. I think, well. So I guess my thinking was, there was, there's so many, so, I mean, what, what would we really be trying to prevent by someone with a criminal history? So somebody with like a, a criminal history, like something violent, or, or perhaps something with drugs, something, I don't know, that would seem sort of egregious to the majority of residents. So I wouldn't want to disqualify someone for something that was more inconsequential. So I think my, my thought is about that I would want to put in there felony offenses to distinguish between the two.
You're muted, Laura.
What's that?
You were muted for a minute there.
Oh, I was, I was telling Milo to scram. I, I was, I was done talking. I guess address what the mayor said. I mean, I agree, but then I think of how many problems we ran into with, with just yours, and, you know. I don't know. Are we going to have any other? With such a small community, are we going to have any other notable people who then want to run for office? Possibly. So, and I know that that was like, you know, it was a thing sometimes. So I, I guess I can understand about making it a deceased, a deceased person. I think I'm okay with that.
Okay, sorry. For the record, the street that is codamed after me was codamed in two thousand and eleven, far before I had any aspirations of ever being in the seat period. The discussion day, I think that you were referring to was something that was very disheartening, was the, the signal box.
Right, yes, yeah.
Where there was a mural, and, you know, I, I'm just to the point to where I'm not going to punish someone for whatever notoriety or whatever service they have done to their city, and I'm definitely not going to tell someone that they have to be dead in order to be honored. I, 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 I just don't agree with that portion of it. I think if they are notable enough, and they get the support that is needed, and they can convince the commission, whoever the commission is, at that, at that time, that this is a worthwhile honor. I, I believe that we had a street named after someone who was, who is deceased. I'm, I'm not a thousand percent sure, but he, he is deceased. Then came back, and there were some very damning things that were said against him, and then the street was removed, and he was dead to my knowledge. So I, I, I don't think that whether you're living or not, things cannot come out. I do understand that you want to be careful of who you are naming a street after. I, I just don't believe in saying that someone has to be dead in order to be honored in, in that way. I, I don't agree with that, so. That's, that's just mine, and as far, I, I wanted to have clarification on what you were saying. So you, you were saying if someone got a misdemeanor, that they could still be eligible for a street name?
Yes, if they had a misdemeanor to let them be eligible, and then if, to clarify that they, they would be disqualified if they had a, a felony offense.
Okay, it, it's just, okay. It would just seem odd if, if we would allow someone with a misdemeanor to have a street named after them, but someone who still has breath in their lungs because they are still living, not to, you know, not, not saying that you are against the other, but the sake of all of it is, is, is kind of bizarre. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Davis? You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not necessarily sure of the history of this particular naming, and but what I get, the gist of it, is that there are issues with naming streets after people who are still alive and people who have misdemeanors. In my past career, I was a vice president of an ancient Spanish monastery, and we had a legacy gala. So people who were legacies in their community were honored, and, you know, a street was named after Garth Reeves, and he was ninety-eight at the time, but, you know, he, he has since passed, but I understand naming it after somebody who's probably retired or somebody on their way to retirement. I have also seen it where, you know, it has turned it around, and, you know, things have come out after somebody has been honored. And so I do understand, you know, being very cautious about street naming when people are still actively in office, and still have, or they're still working and, and not retired. So my thing with that would be, I think that somebody who's, who's going to have a street named after them should be retired. I, I don't think that they should still be in an active role or deceased, and then I don't believe that anybody with a misdemeanor should have a street named after them. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, we can tackle, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Luella.
I just want to say, I'm fine with the ordinance the way that it's written. I don't have any issues with it at all from the way that it's written.
Um, Vice Mayor? You're muted.
Okay, did I raise my hand? Well, I'll say, okay, I must, I'm daydreaming. Well, I don't want to wait till I'm dead to name the street after me, so, you know, you better hurry up and name one.
Stop being away. All right, got it.
Salmo Boulevard.
Oh, Boulevard, sorry. All right, so let's tackle one of, of the issues at a time, so we can move past this. So the first one, obviously, is to have someone deceased. I, I don't, I would like to remove that language. Is there anyone else who would like to remove that language? Vice Mayor, did you want to remove the language, or are you just making a comment?
I, I don't, you know, I have to agree with, with you, and I believe also with Commissioner Davis, and I believe Commissioner Lo. I, you know, I, I don't think that we should jump right into naming somebody's name or this, that. I think it's going to be a long evaluation, but, you know, the honor to, to name somebody that's done something, you know, for your city. You know, it's going to be a process. There's going to be a lot of kickback, and people are going to argue the point and so on. But I think that once said and done, the person deserves a, a street to be, I, and I believe, I think it should be codenamed. I think a lot of that has to do also with the, with the post office. I'm not sure about that, but, but I would think that I would like to see the person be honored while they're alive, while they're retired, or, or they, you know, like you, you know, you know, Mayor, you are one of the people that, your street was named after you because you become a professional athlete, you represent the city of Dania Beach, and there are certain things that put us in that position to name that street. So certain things can come up along the way. I mean, if I win the lottery, I'd like to have the street named after me. I'll buy it, you know what I mean? So messing with you guys, but the point of it is, I think the person should be alive and down the road in the discussion, and maybe we need to fine tune it a little bit more, but I'm a believer that the, the person should be alive to be honored for their street name.
Okay, I, I can, I, I see your hand, Commissioner Luella. I, I, I am willing to, oh my gosh, work together on this. And so I'm okay with it being after the person is retired. Is that, is that okay?
Can we work on this at a different time? Work on that at a different time to take that out.
We're, we're at item nine point one, and we have nine, well, we're at item nine point two. So, I mean, do you want to have a workshop?
No.
Okay. So let's just give it a little, like, five more minutes. So, you know, if, if, if I'm saying, okay, I, I'm hearing, you know, what Commissioner Davis has said, I, I, I'm willing to say, okay, if the person is retired, if they are alive, kid, are you okay with that language, Vice Mayor?
I guess I'm okay with that. I would just, I would just, I think I just want to make sure that, that they're retired. You know, that, but they have to have done something just because they're retired. They have to have something that stimulates that road naming, and, and that's what I'm saying. When the time comes, you know, yes, retired, and, you know, maybe still involved a little bit with the city, but are something, that's what I'm saying. The wording, I don't really care how it comes out. I just want to make sure that if we go to name a street after someone, that there's, you know, that it's, it's talked about, and that there is a consensus that we all agree, that's all.
Right. I think anyone who comes to the city to have any type of street named after them, they would have to have some type of significance in the city. It couldn't just be that this person retired, and we're just going to name a street after them. I, I think there already is a process, and Corinne can jump in at any time and tell me. But I don't think anyone can just go and just say, you know, we want to just apply for a street name just because they retired. I, I think that there are milestones. Corinne, am I correct?
Yes, we do have criteria. There's a list of criteria. One is that the person has significant historical value to the city, that they're not an offensive, you know, citizen. So there's a bunch of criteria. This was one of them, and I knew this might be an item of discussion, so I made sure I pointed it out to you to make sure we were all, you know, on the same page with regards to deceased and the criminal record. But I see that we're massaging that now.
Okay. All right. So Vice Mayor, are you okay with that? All right, Commissioner Davis, are you okay with that? Vice, not Vice Mayor. Commissioner Ottman, Commissioner Luellen?
It's fine. I just, my only comment was, it's going to be that you can still, I, I'd like to make sure that if it's somebody that's retired, that they're truly retired, and it's literally like they're essentially done with their career. It's not like if they're retired from one career and coming back to do another career down the road or something like that. And it's, and it's just, I mean, I've always, you know, I've always been against having anybody who's still alive basically have a street name after them. I just don't think that it's something that we need to especially when you can honor somebody with a proclamation or with a key to the city or some other, some other matter. There's other ways to do it besides having a permanent naming of the street after somebody that, you know, that's all. But I'm fine, whatever.
Okay, great. So Corinne, that change will be made, and then the second one with the misdemeanor, I guess we'll go down and see how everyone feels about that. We'll start with, who do we start with? Commissioner Davis? She's already said no. And then Commissioner Luellen?
You're talking about?
The misdemeanor versus felony?
You're talking about street naming? I will tell you that in a court of law, there are certain things that count, and that has to do with felony and crimes of, that deal with trustworthiness, like embezzlement or stealing, things like that. Drug offenses, things like that don't, don't necessarily count as far as being something that significant. But things that deal with dishonesty, that sort of thing, that's usually something, and Eva or Tom can back me up on this. That's, that's, that would, I don't really care about misdemeanor, whatever, but I do care about trustworthiness.
Okay, so is that a yes or a no before I go to Corinne?
It's a little bit different. It's a combination, because there are certain crimes that are misdemeanors that deal with trustworthiness.
You may be looking for the word moral interpretude.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you. I'm tired. Yeah.
Which basically
I'm not sure of how to go with, I, I, I mean, right now, we're just talking about yes or no, so I'm not sure of how to. I'll get back to you. Let me see how everyone else feels, and then we'll get back, because I don't.
I think we could change the language to include that, is all I'm saying.
That, that's, that's fine. Are, are you okay with that, Vice? Commissioner Ottman?
Yes, yes, and I'm glad that Commissioner Luellen brought that up. That's a great point, and, yeah, so misdemeanors to include the big word she said, moral, moral truth.
I didn't repeat it either. I didn't repeat it either, don't worry.
To misdemeanors excluding uh any moral ter- perpetude violations.
Yeah, right, yeah, thank you.
Great, uh Corinne?
Um I, thank you, I, I thank you for this discussion, but I also, that was um like a big condition. It included um being deceased, we covered that, but included criminal record, but it also included fraudulent, immoral and offensive. Are those things that you just want to drop because you're, we're stuck on the legal qualification?
No, 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 I, I think that those were just the two, we don't want anyone that's doing fraud.
Okay, so we like the others?
Scammers, yeah, we like the others, those are just what was that we kind of pointed out.
Mayor, you didn't ask me, Mayor, you didn't ask me.
I, I, I didn't get there yet.
Oh, sorry, my fault.
I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming. Commissioner Luellen, and then we're past Commissioner Luellen. Um Commissioner Oddman said yes with that specific language, so we have two with that language and now we're at you Vice Mayor.
I am uh against it. I don't, I don't believe that any, any record whatsoever should be uh allowed.
Okay.
So that's either, I don't know how you want to say it, that's no, that would, that's?
Yeah, that's no, that's fine, that's no, it'll be me to be the tiebreaker now, although I am typically against um probably any record that you should probably be honored. I do understand that some people have records at the age of seventeen that are, I was dating an eighteen-year-old, I'm seventeen and now I have a, a criminal worker or petty theft or uh jaywalking or those types of things. So it really would have to be case by case. Um for me or whoever the board is sitting here and I have a faith that whoever is elected will look at that with their moral compass and whatever the big words that even Commissioner Luellen had said uh to make sure that they are making the, the correct decision for, for the individual. Um so I'll, I'll, I'll support it. And we shall move on, is that, wait, we need a, um is this the public hearing, anyone to speak for or against this?
Motion uh approve with the amendments raised.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call the roll please. Oh wait, what, wait? Hold on Tom, I, I saw a hand going back and forth, I'm not sure if it's just mine or yours or. If you have so, before or against, please use the raise your hand tool. All right, go ahead, call the roll please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Luellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Oddman? Vice Mayor Salvino?
Oh.
Was that a no?
No, no, yes, no, yes, it's a no.
Thank you, Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Awesome, um discussion and possible action, the selection of the top firm of the Dania Beach Grill Project by City Manager Garcia.
Yes, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um city team and the city um citizens and residents that are watching tonight. Um we, we've reached a, a crossroads in a very exciting time in our city. As you know, for the past um year or so, I've been updating you at every commission meeting about our request for proposals for the new um Dania Beach Grill. Um I put a selection committee, um we received a multitude of proposals that were um thoroughly reviewed. Um the committee um attentively um, you know, viewed the, the presentations. Um they, they made a top three selection that was recommended to you all. And we've had our chief financial officer and our um city's financial advisor also review all the proposals from a finances component um and send you that information as well. All of you have re- uh received the proposals, have reviewed the proposals. Um so basically at, at this time, I would like to turn it over to you. Uh and you have many options, you can make a decision uh um to direct me and our chief financial officer um to be commence the, the um, the negotiation process. Um you can tonight decide to uh eliminate one out of the three. Um so you have options, so at this time, eh I'd like to turn it over to you and then I will follow your guidance and directive.
Thank you, um I, I'm not sure of anyone else, but I'm just going to throw this out there. Uh I have done a lot of research on the back end without visiting any of the restaurants, uh speaking with different people in finance, uh seeing what was the best deal structure. Um and uh, I mean, I'm not prepared today to pick um one out of all, out of the three. But if everyone else is, you won't hear a fight out of me, but that's just my contribution to the conversation. I, I don't want to, I feel rushed, that time came around really, really fast and um I just was not able to do everything I wanted to do for that process, so I'll leave it up to the, to everyone else. Vice Mayor, I see you trying to raise your hand, but?
I'm, I'm um, I'm pretty much ready Mayor, I did do my due diligence. I went to multiple restaurants on the West Coast and on the East Coast. Um you know, I've come up with um no recommendation on my end as far as I go, I'm not going to force anybody's hand. Um but uh I, I did push myself hard to get it done at times, but it, but whatever you got, it is a big decision. If um, if everybody else is ready, you know, then I would say we move on if, if they're not, then you know, I'm, I'm, I would go with you or anybody else, but, but I'm ready. I, I did all my homework.
All right, awesome, Vice Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
Thank you Mayor, uh yes, I did do my due diligence and I am ready to go. I understand when you feel like you don't have the opportunity to do your due diligence, but I have it all written up here in my report. So if you guys are ready, I'm ready, so we can?
We can discuss it, I, I, that's, it's clear that everyone's ready. So however you guys want to start or to put your options out, I'll, I'll go quickly uh to see what um Commissioner uh Luellen and Commissioner Oddman had to say before we start the discussions, Commissioner Luellen?
I was just going to say that um I, I was able to visit two of the three uh proposed, proposed restaurants, I couldn't get to the third. Um but I feel like I, I, number one, I trust my colleagues as far as what they saw and I also trust our team that put together their proposals. So um I'd be willing to listen to hear what everybody has to say about um the third one that I did not get to, get to. Um and I, I, I think the people really want us to make a decision. Um I've been talking to a lot of residents and I've actually just a little while ago got a couple of text messages from people telling me that they wanted, um they really want it to be, they want to make sure it's going to get done tonight. So I think we owe the, the public that as well.
Commissioner Oddman?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable moving on. I mean, we've had people who just, we didn't vote on something because they didn't do their homework several times. So I mean, if, if, if you're, if you don't feel like you're ready, I, I don't, you know, I don't want to push you. I understand it's something all the residents are, are eager for us to uh vote on, but we've certainly not voted on something uh before because people were, we didn't do their work. Um so if you weren't able to because of other obligations and you need more time, I would want to give you that time enough. I wouldn't want you to feel pushed into a decision, but if you wanted to start the conversation, we can do that as well, it's up to you.
Um I appreciate that and it's not that I didn't do my due diligence. I, like I said, I, I've, I've done, I've spoken to several people, I've spoken to several financial people. I have, um I just haven't been able to go out to all of the different restaurants and, and uh, and see them per se. But other than that, I, I've done it and so it's not something I'm going to fall on the sword for. Um i- if the rest of the commissioners just want to push through regardless, uh we can just, we can just push through, it's not a big deal to me. I mean, of course, I, I would have liked the opportunity, but we can, I, I know that our residents are anxious. Um we all are anxious and this is a very big decision, that's the only reason why I was saying that I, I didn't do every single thing I want to do. Um but since we have a consensus to move forward, I guess we'll move forward.
Okay. Anyone want to start with anyone or?
Oh, can we, um, do we have a motion to eliminate a firm first so we can put it down to two people, two, two firms or two restaurants?
You want us to propose who we'd want to eliminate?
Correct.
Okay, I eliminate uh bo campers.
Do we have a second that want to do that?
Second.
All right, we have a third that wants to do that? I'll be the third. I'll be the third, okay, so now it, it's between um Lucky's and Caddy's. Does someone want to say who they recommend and why and kind of present them?
I'm ready to go, I know Commissioner Davis said she was ready to go.
Everyone's ready to go except me, so we'll go in order of, of how we do commission comments. Consistent, all right, Commissioner Davis, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you Mayor, I am super excited about this because it is something that I um have had my heart set on and I'm glad that the manager and our finance team has given us the opportunity to be able to go to all three um locations, which I did. So um I, if anybody has talked to me recently, I've had my head buried in statistics and trying to pass it at the doctoral level and I hated every moment of it until I was able to apply it to this system and this decision-making process. So I did do a comparative analysis on Lucky Fish and Caddy's, we won't do bo campers, but they did fall in last on my um, on my comparative analysis. So what I was able to do is give cert- feedback surveys to a limited sample of the Dania Beach population which included um people from children from twelve years old all the way to fifty years old. And we looked at the uh continuous variables of value versus money and uh we looked at the categories of scale from one to ten and we also did stars from one to five, one being poor, two being average, three being good, four being excellent and five being extraordinary. Uh we also had a representative group of all of the participants. We had black, white, Hispanic, men, women and children who participated and were able to go to all of the restaurants with me. Finally, I included a comparison of the Quarter Deck Restaurant and uh a comparison of each restaurant to the Quarter Deck Restaurant and made recommend, and also included the recommendations from the finance department uh as, as consideration for the final evaluation decision. And what I came up with was uh, we did, where we did um a sample variable which is basically the eh, the Lucky Fish had ninety-six point five out of a hundred and they had four point seven five out of five stars and Caddy's had fifty-nine point six out of a hundred and they had three stars. Um at the end of the day, all three locations have attractive waterfront properties. Both Lucky Fish and Caddy's ranked above average on the following, uh I will tell you the variables. We looked at the ten categories, quality of food, quality of service, exterior design, interior design, ambiance, atmosphere, environmentally friendly, cleanliness, value for money, suitable for families and restaurant hours. So those were the criteria that we used in order to judge all of the restaurants and both Lucky Fish and Caddy's ranked above uh ranked above bo campers with regard to their quality of service, interior and exterior design, being environmentally friendly and clean. Um Lucky Fish was outranked and outranked Caddy's in quality of food and value for money of, and suitable for families and restaurant hours. Uh the participants really liked the fact that Lucky's has a breakfast option, which is from eight AM to twelve AM. So you have a different long period of time where um the quarter deck is not open. There are a lot of residents who want to go on the beach and have breakfast. Um the only comment was that there were not healthy items on the menu for that. So they suggested fruit bowls, they suggested yogurt, avocado toast, smoothies, having something healthy on the menu uh for the for just pe- in period, but definitely for breakfast for there's a lot of people who walk and exercise along the beach in the morning, who when you finish working out, you want to have something healthy. They did have like hangover hash and a lot of, you know, home fries and different things like that, but you know, we definitely want some healthy options. Um additionally, the restaurant that was closest to the Quarter Deck was Caddy's. It's a similar building style, it had the similar um, you know, indoor-outdoor kind of feel, it was, it was very similar. And they also have the exact same um, you know, hours of opening, I think, except that maybe Caddy's opens at eleven o'clock AM, which they do. Um and they close at eleven PM, which is very similar to what the Quarter Deck does and it's very similar. And I think that what we want to do is make sure that we have a restaurant that complements the Quarter Deck and not competes with it. Uh lastly, uh yeah, and Caddy's has a com- I mean, um Lucky Fish has a completely tiki, tiki restaurant style and uh that is a lot of what the input that the residents wanted, something that was closely, closely reminiscent of the Dania Beach Grill. Um Caddy's offers a similar style and ambiance to the Quarter Deck and ha- and has competing hours. Um another thing about Caddy's, uh the person that I went with had a seafood allergy. So if you had a seafood allergy, there was a very limited menu of what you could eat. A lot of people don't eat su- shellfish due to religious dietary restrictions or they have seafood allergies. And if you didn't have that, you can only have the burger, the black and blue salad or the pretzel and it just real, or the steak, which it wasn't that, you know, it wasn't received very well. So um they have, and Lucky Fish had a lot more items that you could look at and that you could taste uh that weren't uh seafood oriented, which gave the people a lot more options. Uh lastly, I looked at what the rankings were from our staff and our directors and they uh liked or they ranked Lucky Fish and then Bo Campers and then Caddy's last. I looked at that and since Bo Campers was eliminated, I agree with the staff and I also looked at the finance department where they considered um that Caddy's and Bo Campers both were offering seven percent revenue sharing, whereas Lucky Fish was only offering four percent. So based on the comparative analysis from the diverse group of participants and residents, in addition to the recommendation from the finance department, I highly recommend Lucky Fish LM Restaurants for the redevelopment of the Dania Beach Grill pending that the manager and the finance department are able to negotiate a revenue sharing percentage that they see fit and appropriate. Thank you.
Well, we can count on you to have the statistics. You helped me out a whole lot, I, I appreciate you. We all bring our strengths, girl, and that's yours. Um Commissioner Luellen, floor is yours.
Great, and I knew that Commissioner Davis would be thorough, so I'm glad she went first. Um I was only able to go to uh Lucky Fish and Bo's on the beach, I was not able to go to the West Coast unfortunately. Um but I did do some due diligence and asked uh some questions of staff and did, you know, my own research on certain things. Um I eliminated bo campers, just primarily just so people know, I, I just don't know that that's, I don't think that's what we're looking for with Dania Beach Grill to replace the Dania Beach Grill, it's just not, not really what we've been looking for. Uh but uh Lucky Fish, I will say, I was very impressed with. Um I like the fact that number one, it is not a chain, um the others all are. Um it is an individually owned business, they do have other restaurants, but they're not all the same. They're unique and individual to the individual places where they're, where they, where they're built. Um it is a giant tiki bar, I actually um did note that it kind of felt like the Dania Beach Grill, but a little nicer. Um that was, that was the, 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 the ambiance overall. There were definitely people there who were dressed nicely, who were enjoying themselves, but there were also people there who were wearing no shoes and wearing bathing suits. So it, it's what we had before, but again, like I said, nicer. Um I can see how it would not take that long to build once um permits are, are issued uh because it is a fairly simple structure. Um and I, and that's also a big plus, I think, for our residents because they really do want this done sooner rather than later. Um the, there was an area for music, they were not using it, but there was an area for music so that it, it could definitely be used. Um obviously, they're, they're putting that aside for us here. Um the financial aspect of it, I, I do appreciate the fact that Lucky Fish is um able to uh be financed or has the financial incentives there, whereas Caddy's does not. Um and I also did, part of what? And I also did, part of what I did was I met with a lot of our residents, especially people who have been very vocal about the Danny Beach Grill. The there is a page out there, I'm sure you all know about it, Friends of the Danny Beach Grill or Friends of Danny Beach, that they actually, the gentleman who runs it actually did a survey of people that are friends of that page to see what they thought and what their their thoughts were. And he provided me with the results of the survey. And Lucky Fish was the one that everybody wanted the most. Caddies, I believe, was second, as far as second choice. But Lucky Fish was the first choice. And anyway, and the and the prices are reasonable. They're both they're reasonable both places. I mean, both Caddies and and Lucky Fish had very reasonable prices, considering the locations. There's never going to be two dollar beers again. They're never going to have, you know, really inexpensive burgers and things like that. But I I mean, when I went, it was reasonable. It wasn't completely ridiculous for what you normally would pay for places on the beach. And it was a really unique experience. So I really, I at this point, I would go with Lucky Fish. But I am I'm more than willing to hear about how colleagues have seen if they've gone over to Caddies to tell me what they think about it. I I didn't dislike what I saw about Caddies. The the biggest thing with it was that it is a chain and that the finances were another issue for me primarily. So, anyway, on to the next. Is that me?
Yeah. Yep, yep, yep. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Otman.
My, so first of all, I'm just so appreciative of our colleague, Commissioner Davis, that was so helpful, what you said. And I was really pleased that everything, you know, I I had found by talking to residents was in line with with your incredibly well-structured research. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that you did that. So my my approach to this was I tried to speak with people who I knew were primarily kind of regulars. Because I was not a regular at the Danny Beach Grill. I had attended, but was not a regular. So and and see what their thoughts on the options were. And overwhelmingly, it from the beginning, it was with it was with Lucky, Lucky Fish. I kind of, at first, I was, I did not know that it was going to go over so well. I I kind of felt like all three of them. I mean, it's definitely different than, I feel like Commissioner Llewellyn was saying, you know, the the two dollar beers or whatever it was is gone. The, you know, the but so are the splinters in your foot from the wood. So, you know. But could I see when when people were saying, well, the food looks good there, it's not a chain. That seemed to be a big sticking point. The chain aspect, and it was not, they did not want a chain. Even though I I can appreciate that that Caddies and Bo campers, I mean, we met them, we heard from them. These were very passionate people and had a great presentation. The chain thing was a big stickler. And the the comprehensiveness of of the menus at Lucky Fish was was a big selling point. So, I mean, everyone I I spoke to that was Dania Beach, beach-centric, overwhelmingly said Lucky Fish. And then when I separated their opinion and just went with my own and what my own personal preference was, it was Lucky Fish. So that was where I I landed. And it was a relatively easy place to land.
Vice Mayor?
Well, hello, everybody. You're gonna you're gonna get a whole different opinion from me. So I'm gonna tell you my thing. I did take the time off and I did travel to the West Coast of Florida. And I visited four of the Caddies restaurants out of their five that I think they have. Just to just to reiterate some of the comments that were made about certain things. First of all, Lucky Fish is a it will be a chain because if they utilize this concept, they'll be using the same food that they're using in Pompano, which turns it into chain food. One thing about Lucky Fish that I'm not and I'm not saying anything negative about, I'm not gonna say Lucky Fish isn't good, but I'm gonna tell you some of the things I didn't agree with. When I I did go there twice, I went there on a weekend, and I went there in on a morning to try to catch breakfast, but I got there a little bit late. It is also weekend, but it wasn't real busy then. And the reason it wasn't busy is because it was pouring down rain. And because of that feature of pouring down rain, they don't have much cover there. So there wasn't a lot of people there, which means they get rained out, because most of their tables are under an umbrella or a little bit of a tiki hut style. So everybody that was there was was gathered around the bar. So that feature kind of turned me off. Everybody was sitting at a bar instead of at a table when it rained. And it did it did limit the amount of people that could be there at that time, whereas Caddies Restaurants, as presented before by Commissioner Davis, they did have a concept like the Quarter Deck where there is inside seating and outside seating. By saying that outside, inside and outside seating, they did have one feature that we've all talked about, that nobody's brought up. They had a second floor seating, which will also overlook the ocean. Lucky Fish did not offer that. They have ground-level seating or a little bit of an elevation. But it's not the second floor's station where people have an option to sit up top. I'm turning, I'm reading my notes, so I'm not turning away, so excuse me. The they did serve breakfast at the Treasure Island, as far as I could see on the menu. It did serve, I was just just trying to confirm it. It served omelets, it served pancakes, it served eggs and bacon. So I I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, but I did see that one of them, or maybe more than, did serve breakfast, okay? Well, it's on their it's on their website. So so if they didn't do that, I did the website's wrong because I didn't get up there to check the breakfast on it. The the food was good. It had items on the menu that were very attractive. And there was items on the menu that weren't attractive. But that happened at both restaurants. Items that were, and I did bring people with me to both restaurant, both sides, to also have a a biased opinion about, you know, the the food and stuff. And I did get different feelings. Some people liked the conch fritters, but some people felt they were greasy. Some people liked the fried shrimp. Some people said they looked like they're out of the box. Some people loved the tuna at Lucky Fish. Some people, because it's a it's a salad, and some people liked Lucky Caddies fish because it was it was all chunked, or vice versa, I'm sorry. It was a it was a tuna steak. So on and so on, the menus were relatively similar. The food was good at both locations. The 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 restaurants that Caddies had, the four that I went to, they were all in really, really great locations. They all overlooked the water. The service was, as soon as I walked in door, I was greeted. I was a little bit more aggressively at Caddies. I'm not saying that I wasn't greeted well at Lucky Fish. They had, some people took a little longer to they to get there, but they got there and they sat me in a nice seat the first time by the ocean. And then the other pit, the other places, I can tell you that Caddies was full. Every single restaurant I went to was full, except for one. And that's because the road was under construction out the front. I I thought the pricing on the drinks, should I say, alcohol beverages that I did have a few of were very, very reasonably priced. I was actually a little bit surprised. They were actually six dollars for a drink and it wasn't even happy hour. So kind of caught me off guard a little bit. The food was priced in a moderate range of anywhere between eight and fifteen dollars for most items. But that, I think, was also the same pricing at Lucky at Lucky Fish. You know, the the cleanliness of the restaurant, Caddies was, their bathrooms were really, really clean. Their their floors were clean. I mean, they did they did a really nice job with it. All the all the people that served me did a really nice job. They the service at Lucky Fish, I had a great waitress. I can't complain. She was very, very nice both times, two different ones. So there was there was no issue with that at all. The I felt Lucky Fish was a little dirtier, only possibly because they were on the beach. And when they're on the beach facing sand, you know, the sand would blow. And especially the day I went back and it rained, you know, it was sandy, it was wet. It was the chairs were wet. It was an uncomfortable feeling for me. But, you know, on a on a dry day, it would be a nice place to sit and enjoy yourself. So it's kind of a tough situation, you know, by choosing this, because this is something we're gonna choose that's gonna go there for the next thirty, forty years if they people stay in business and so on. And, you know, I I just have a feeling that it's it's tough for all of us to make a decision on on a Caddies restaurant because one to three of us did not, three of the commissioners not make it there to really feel that out. And we started talking about people that have gone there. I did I did question a bunch of my neighbors, some of my employees, people that come in my store as they were questioning things and asking us about it over the time. For instance, we've got our paper. I I kind of asked, and be honest with you, ninety percent have never heard of Lucky Fish or Caddies. So and the few that the few that I did get responses from, they were all positive about both of them. So there really wasn't a it really wasn't anything negative about that. So, you know, I mean, the overall, I know that Commissioner Davis did a great job with her presentation. If you want to go by the numbers, and and I think that, you know, you have to take those into consideration. As a layman in this type of thing, I feel that, you know, and and me participating in a lot of outside restaurants, I'm 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 in the favor of Caddies by a slight margin. I I'm not I'm not disappointed in in choosing that. I think that they would be able to provide the beach what they're looking for, especially with the second floor that I think that they presented and they're and they're offering. And I know that when we go to do this, whatever we select, these these contracts are up for negotiation on the amount of rents and amount how and amount of percentages that the city manager can negotiate with. So I don't think any of that really matter at the point of what they offered. Because if we come back and offer them or tell them what we would like to have, and they they don't want to take that offer at that point, then we can move to the next alternative and see if they want it. If not, we have to settle back, either make our adjustment to get one of those two in there. So I don't know if the the numbers, and if I'm wrong on that, am I saying anything wrong with that at all? Or is that correct, city manager?
No, no, we 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 and I was taking some notes. We actually look forward to negotiating. So what what you see on paper is a negotiating point for us. I've negotiated, you know, many of these, and I was taking notes. For example, when Commissioner Davis said, let's make sure that we get some healthy options, avocado toast. So we we will be ready to negotiate, but what you see on that paper is just something that we will always counter, always in the best interest of the city.
Okay. Well, you know, then, you know, when it gets down to this, I'm I'm just giving you my opinion on this, and everybody's had their opinion. I know that Commissioner Davis and I both, at different times, went to Caddies. We got an intern look at it. I understand how she feels. I guess it's just that's why we all have our own opinions. I'm very content with with Caddies. But I'm gonna go with the majority without fight. And I'm going to, you know, ask all the commissioners to evaluate all of our conversations before any decisions are made, because this is a big decision for all of us at this time to make and to be with. And I do know that by saying this and ending my conversation, that no matter what we come up with, it will be left with the finance manager and the city attorney to negotiate the best deal possible for us. I feel that Caddies is a little bit better choice, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, but you guys can make up your choices. And and whatever the majority vote is, that's why we're a team and it'll come out that way. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Commissioner and everybody else.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Vice Mayor because I know that he and I are probably the only two that actually got to go out to the Caddies. But I did want to be specific that the Caddies that was submitted for the proposal, they said that they were basing it on the Madeira Beach location. And so that's where the hours come from for what they said that they were proposing. So there is Treasure Island does have a breakfast option. However, that's not the the model that they said that they were doing. And if they wanted to use those hours, they certainly could have made that adjustment in their proposal. The other thing is that I want to make sure that we're not tying our our staff's hands. And so whatever they need to do to have the best negotiation power, then I want to make sure that we give them that opportunity. And as well as if there's anybody else who wants to go and evaluate the restaurants and feel like they actually definitely, definitely need to see it. I have to see it. I'm one of those people. I had to see it. So I was gonna get there, come or went high water. I was going to make it. But if somebody feels like they really want to go out there and they need to see it and they need to, you know, experience it, I am willing to allow them to do it. I just know how important it is for our residents to move forward. So I wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence in the timeframe that we had. But if there's anybody who feels like they really want to go out and see that and 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 have a little bit more, then then I would be willing to allow you to do that. You know, I I I'm I'm excited to move forward, but I understand how it is if you wanted to give yourself an opportunity to see it in person. So my decision stands the same, but I just wanted to to let the commission know how I felt. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. You're muted. Yes, I got you one time.
I just wanted to say one thing real quick. I think that we're really, really fortunate that we had these. These are all excellent choices and excellent companies, excellent proposals that were sent to us. And actually going and seeing them, I mean, they these are these are professionals and they really, they really, you know, want to do this. And I think they all did a nice job with it, you know. And I I just I wanted to say that because I do think that we do have some really good options to choose from. No, it's not the same Danny Beach Grill, but I think it's you know, our ultimate choice is going to end up being something that our residents are really gonna like and they're gonna appreciate and they're going to frequent it. And we're gonna have people from other places coming as well, just like we did with the Danny Beach Grill. So that's all I wanted to say. But my my decision is still the same. I'm still Lucky Fish first.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Yes, well, you know, the one thing I have to say is I I I I'm gonna reconsider my thought about your request, Mayor James, because I really think that I don't think it's fair to make a choice without seeing it. And I'm gonna ask the three commissioners, if we give it two weeks to our next meeting, would you would you consider or make the time to go check out Caddies Restaurant? Because I think a decision being made like this, we're obligated to our residents to go there and make this choice.
Oh, reconsideration, eh? I like it.
Well, you should have done it before, so don't get on my case.
I I have a nine-year-old. I have a lot of responsibilities and I'm this, I'm going to the FRA. No, I'm going to the FRA this Wednesday through Friday, and the next Wednesday through Friday, I'll be in Orlando for another conference.
Do it in one day. I did it.
Okay. I don't know how I'm gonna do that in two weeks.
Well, I don't I wouldn't I wouldn't ask the residents to wait much longer than that, but they're not gonna, you know, they I think it's just something that it's a big decision.
Yeah, I mean, I would be ready by the first week in December, just because we don't have another weekend in November. But if that's if that's too long for everyone, it's not, it's it's either gonna be Lucky's or from what I'm hearing, or the first week in December. So the choices you all, it's not mine.
I just made the offer, whatever you guys want to do.
What was the request to go to North Carolina?
You go to Sarasota, Clearwater, Bradenton. Go to Bradenton's closest.
I'm going to Bradenton.
No, I've already been there. So I don't, I mean, not for this venture. I'd already been there to eat there. But I guess if Mayor James wants to go to just one of those, it's up to you. It's up to, I think, how important it is to you.
My plans were to go to Bradenton, as I had said before. There are actually like three of the same restaurant in different locations over there in Bradenton. And then I I know of the other two that that were local. But but again, if it's if it's too much to wait to the first meeting in December, then then we can move along. So Vice Mayor, is it too much to ask to wait to the first meeting in December, or is that a deal breaker for you?
Well, whatever the the majority, why don't you ask the other three commissioners to see what they want to do?
Well, you're the tiebreaker, clearly. I mean, because Commissioner Otman is saying that she is willing to wait. And then, you know, we have Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Llewellyn, who's ready to Um, and then, you know, we have Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Luella who's ready to, to make a move. So then it falls on you.
Okay. Um, I think you need to go. I, I'll take, I'll take the wait. I'd rather you go. I, I mean, if you're going to go, if you're not going to go.
No, I'm going to go.
I mean, if you're not going to go.
Quarantine, so that's why I couldn't go anywhere for, for, for a certain amount of days. So I stayed home.
I mean, it's, I, I hate to delay it because we have a timeline we're supposed to be on. But, uh, I just think the best interest for the residents of Daniel Beach, you guys need to give them the best shot that you can and evaluate. That's my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Luella?
I was going to say that, one, I, I have not been over to Caddies and I'm not going to be able to get over to Caddies during that time period. Um, so I'm not going to have the opportunity to see it either, but I think that we owe our residents. Honestly, we need to move forward on this. We, I mean, that they're, they, they thought we were going to vote on this, you know, I think, what, the, the first meeting in October initially. And we bumped it till now so that we could all have an opportunity to go. Um, I'm sure Mayor, you tried to get over there. We couldn't do it. I tried to get over there and I couldn't do it. And, uh, you know, I don't know that it's something that we're obligated to do. I think it's something that we're, it's, it's, it's more of a courtesy to try to do it. But, I mean, we have the information and I just don't see why we don't move forward at this point because the longer we wait, the longer it's going to take to start the negotiations, the longer it's going to take to start getting departments and everything. And, you know, we could be up to twenty twenty-three before something is done. So, you know, I, 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 I just feel like we're delaying something that we could reasonably decide on today.
Well, we, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I would like the opportunity to go. That's what I opened up and said. And if there are two other, um, electives that are willing to give you the opportunity, I, I appreciate that. And, and like I said before, if not, I'll just go with the majority. So, um,
You have my support.
Thank you.
Are you going to go, Commissioner Otman, to, to check it out or no?
To go, yes.
You're going to, have you been to that restaurant?
I've been to that one and the, the Boe Camper.
Well, if you've already, if you went, you went to look, you went to, you went to the West Coast?
Yeah, I've already, not.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't, I thought you said you didn't go there.
No, I didn't go for this trip. I was there with my son, um, about three months ago.
Okay. Well, you know, listen, if you've been there and there's three of us there, you know what it's like, then let's vote. Let's go. I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's immaterial because we already know which way Commissioner Luella is going to go. She's already specified. She wants to go to Lucky Fish. You've been there. You know how I want to go. It's going to be, the mayor is going to be a tiebreaker. So, or maybe, maybe not. I mean, it depends on which way you go. So, I mean, let's just move on.
Okay. What's your final decision, um?
I'd say right, I'd say right now that I can see the Commissioner Luella, uh, Lauren Otman is not going to go. Lori's not going, Commissioner Luella is not going to go.
I was the only person that was waiting to go some.
So, but, yeah, but you're, but you're, uh, the, I see the sway of the vote already and I don't think it's going to change where you're going. That's the way it looks because I see two already for Lucky Fish. Uh, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Otman has made up her mind. If she's made up her mind with Lucky Fish, there's no reason for us to go any further.
Commissioner Otman, have you made up your mind?
I, I thought that was clear that, that, yes.
Okay. So we have, so no, just so we can move forward because it's not a, I, I believe in consensus and what people vote is what they vote and let's move forward. And I don't want to drag this on any further than it has to be drug on. I'm talking about this conversation per se. And so if we have three solid yeses for Lucky's Fish, um, I'm going to go and ask Tom to call the role for that. So it can be on an official record of who you all, uh, if it's yes for Lucky's Fish. And then we can move forward in that way. So Tom, could you please just, um, poll the group for if they like Lucky's Fish as, um, the selection for the farm for the Danny Beach Bar and Grill Project?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Luella?
Yes.
Commissioner Otman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
No.
Mayor James?
Yes.
All right. There's four yeses and one no for Lucky Fish.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Davis?
All right. Uh, let's see. I think I only attended two events here recently. Uh, one was a very successful event at Saint Ruth's Mobile Pantry. I was able to volunteer with the, uh, members of the church who did the food drive during the pandemic and they get, they gave away so many different things, groceries, but they also gave away, you know, laundry detergent and bleach and all the whole kinds of things that people are, who are in need, really need right now. So I just really, um, appreciate all those people at Saint Ruth's who continue to do such a great job for the community. Thanks to Ms. Gloria Black for inviting me and, uh, the, the rest of everyone who participated in that event. Uh, lastly, we got to go, my first in-person for Lauderdale Alliance Dinner on last Thursday. Uh, was phenomenal. A lot of people who I just get to see virtually, I got to see in person and meet for the first time. And the big surprise for me was that out of all those, uh, oh, oh, probably a thousand or more people were there, um, that we were able to have Jackson's Ice Cream as the featured dessert. And, uh, we did make sure that Michael, our CRA Director, um, Chen went up and, and asked them to recognize Daniel Beach and Jackson's for, uh, being a part of that, uh, special event. So, uh, for me, that's it. And thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Luella?
Thank you. Um, I also went to the Alliance Dinner. It was nice to see a lot of, uh, people, a lot of familiar faces. Um, and it was awesome to see Jackson being featured. Um, everybody was coming out to try out the ice cream. So it was a really good opportunity for them. Uh, one of our local businesses to, to get that kind of recognition. Um, I don't really have anything else. I did want to welcome our new, uh, assistant, uh, Maxine Singh, um, who just started with us. And I know we've all, I believe we've all had a chance to meet with her and, and spend some time with her. And, um, so, you know, if y'all are trying to reach us out there and you can't get ahold of, of us for some reason, Maxine is the one to call. Um, and at the same time, I also want to thank Chris Lodi, who is still here, still working, um, but she's worked very hard, um, dealing with a lot of very demanding electeds. Um, and now at least she gets some help. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to thank her for that. And I also just want to say thank you to all the people out there that reached out to me. Um, about losing my puppy, um, Bandit, and about Lucy, who's had some health issues too, which is why she's here tonight, but she's good. She's in good shape. So I wanted to say hi. So she's, uh, she's on the road to recovery. She's doing much better. So, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for reaching out. I really appreciate it. That's all.
Commissioner Otman?
Yeah, hi. Um, I, I was just going to say the same thing about, uh, about Maxine. Welcome to her. She has been tremendously helpful. I don't know if any of you have asked her for a task yet, but, uh, I've asked her like three and some of them were kind of weird and she was like on point, able to find what I needed. Um, and was, and was quick and professional and, and just, she was really wonderful. So what, what a, I don't know. What a blessing for us to have her. And I'm just, I'm so glad she is here with us to, uh, to lend her, her, her experience. Um, and, uh, that's all I have. And I'm so sorry to hear about your, about your, about your doggy. Yeah. Um, but that's all I have. Thank you all so much.
Vice Mayor?
Well, now it's my turn. All right. Um, same thing all the women said about going to Lions and Jackson's, I love all that. Whenever I take a look, I did my nails for my grandkids for Halloween. How's this look? I see that? Okay. I just want to share that. We're doing, we're going to marry, get a funny look. Um, anyhow, I've, um, teamed up with, um, the Human Service Department of Broward County. It's called the, uh, the Family Success Administration Division. And I'm asking, uh, any of the residents of Daniel Beach, uh, or outside that might be listening. Um, we have, uh, we're working with the homeless that are looking for, uh, transportation, uh, with bicycles. So my stores teamed up with them. I'm donating my time and some materials. Uh, we're looking for people that are not using their bikes anymore, that are laying in their garages, uh, whether it's junk or not, anything. If they would like to donate them to the, this, uh, this program we're working on, I would be, uh, happy to offer free pickup for you. So I can fix these people up bicycles so they can try to get to work and get around town. They're working very hard to get them back to work. So if anybody, uh, wants to donate those to help this homeless group I'm working with, uh, please call me at my, at least bike shop and I'll take it from there. Um, other than that, um, I, I, like I said, I went to the Lions. I have to tell you about the Lions. It's been, you know, for all those that attended, that was, uh, I was, it's been a long time coming. Uh, what a great event. It was well attended. I think it would have, you know, at least a thousand people there. And Jackson's was a standout in there. I mean, they, they had like four or five nice umbrellas in there and people scooping ice cream. There's a line, uh, you know, thirty people need to get there. So, uh, representing our city, they even spoke about it and said they're from Daniel Beach in front of everybody. So we, we're getting represented more and more every time we go to a, uh, some type of a meeting and so on. So thank you. That's all I have to say tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Luella.
She already spoke.
It's just a PSA. I think you'll, I think you'll appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to let people know that, uh, Danny Beach Dermatology in November, every Thursday, they're having free skin cancer checkups. Um, you just have to go onto their website, dannybeachgermatology.com and sign up and it's free. So just, I just want to let those people know that. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no comments for tonight other than, um, to remind people of the Halloween or the Fall Festival event that will be happening this Friday is just another reminder. Um, and other than that, we'll move on to appointments. And I have an appointment for the Housing Board. Polly Jones Mosley. Tom, I will send you her, um, phone number via email so I don't say it out over the internet.
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Um, and I have someone, Tom, I, I forget, did I have someone for the Airport Advisory Board?
You actually had, uh, two people that have recently submitted online interest forms, that being Brian Cunningham and Liliana Garrido for the Airport Board.
Those are my appointments then.
Very good.
All right. Any other, um, board appointments?
Mayor, Mayor, sorry. Uh, Tom, did, did you get an application that came in for, uh, an Education Advisory Board? I think you sent it to me, did you not?
Yes, sir. I sent it to all of the commissioners, uh, with the education. That was also Liliana Garrido, who indicated her interest in that board as well.
Well, I'll go ahead and nominate her then if it's okay with everybody else in my position filled.
Yeah. All right. Do we have a motion in a second to adopt the appointments? All in favor? Anyone want to pause? Um, City Manager? Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners again. Um, I also want to, um, welcome Maxine aboard and congratulate, uh, our HR Director and the Fine Selection Committee because we continue to augment this existing team and Maxine was truly a remarkable, uh, selection. Um, I also wanted to let you know that, um, I've, I've added a report, an update on JA Ely. I spoke to Mayor James at length today, um, and Candido, our Deputy Manager submitted a report, so I can give you this update. Um, so basically Broward County has added three additional flashing light elements in that strip of JA Ely that's in the border of Hollywood in our city. Um, we have also concluded, um, our assessment um, based on the entire area of the JA Ely Boulevard. And, um, basically the, the traffic data that our traffic engineer working with this consultant um, and our entire public services team has been able to gather that there are, um, deep concerns in, in the speeding of JA Ely. So they have proposed plans that include a speed tables, raised intersection, uh, center median island. So, um, that has been concluded. So our next step is to cost this out. And we're going to bring you those, those numbers. And we're also going to be negotiating, um, with the city of, of Hollywood and also possibly Broward County, um, to support these efforts, um, to bring the, 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 the most safest environment to, um, JA Ely Boulevard. Um, I, I wanted to highlight a couple of, um, uh, the key points of my manager's report. Um, I, I, I had been working with BSO. Um, and one of the things that they're doing is, is enhancing the details, particularly in the area of school zones. Um, two years ago, we had one, um, you know, basically, um, broken down speed trailer. And, and now I can tell you that we have five in total speed trailers and LPRs, which are the license plate readers. So thanking you for your support in the budget, particularly with everything having to do, um, with, uh, safety. So we're very happy to continue to add on those speed trailers and those LPRs because they really work to bring traffic down, but also to catch crime that occurs in our cities with those license plate readers. Um, if you haven't had a chance to go by Mildred Jones Park, please do. Um, it, it's been totally, uh, renovated. The, the, the deck has been replaced. Um, there's some photos that I've included. Um, the, the Star Centennial Park has been, um, you know, the whole landscaping has been redone and it looks absolutely beautiful. Um, we also wanted to let you know that being aligned with your priorities of, of our Parks Master Plan, um, that we put out the RFQ for the construction manager at, um, at, at risk. So, um, we're, we're very excited to add this um, because our adopted Parks Plan will become a reality and, um, back construction and moving forward with your support on the forty-five million. Um, we need to make sure that we have the right team ensuring that these projects get done on time and on schedule and on budget. Um, the long-awaited Southeast Second Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, um, we're looking to finish that project by the end of December. Um, we're letting the residents know, um, that we're almost there. We're putting, um, uh, door handles, um, information on the door handles to inform our residents. Um, I also wanted to let you know, um, with your strategic master plan, what I've seen in the past, a strategic master plan gets a- adopted, it goes on the shelf. But what I've done is working with our Deputy City Manager, we're putting a committee together. So we make sure that we track these timelines and your priorities so we can continue to get things off the list and continue to move things forward, um, for you and for our community. So we're very excited about this committee. Um, I'm, I'm going to be hopefully in February, finally be able to attend, um, after a long, long time due to COVID, um, the, the Florida City and County Managers, um, Winter Conference. So we're very excited about that. We'll bring an official document uh, to the November meeting for your approval on that request. We continue to, uh, monitor COVID. I, I wanted to thank, um, our HR Director and also Commissioner Otman. Um, we have been probably the most proactive city, um, because of all of you and your support. Um, based on the conversations that I've had with, with many of you that have called, um, we, we will be looking to go live unless something drastically changes um, in January, giving the opportunities for, for children, um, to also be vaccinated because this is also very, very, very important. Um, and something that, um, the, that Commissioner Otman brought to my attention. Um, Commissioner Luella, and we are ensuring that we do get below that five percent positivity, uh, um, rate. And that's something that our HR Director is, um, keeping us informed about. So I just wanted to thank you and our entire team for your ongoing support. And I look forward, uh, to working with our, our Chief Financial Officer, our Deputy City Manager and, um, our legal team to bring forward to you as soon as possible a negotiated contract for your approval. We can put some shovels in the ground very, very quickly, um, to be able to bring back the Daniel Beach Grill, um, to our residents. And thank you. This concludes my. Thank you. City Attorney?
I was just going to add that there isn't a bill being sponsored for the, this Florida legislative session to allow cities once again to designate non-smoking areas in beaches and parks. And I suppose we would, I would recommend that we do a resolution in support of that. Make sure it goes to the, the legislator who's doing this in the Florida League of Cities.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I've got.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, November nine at five thirty is your CRA Board Meeting, followed by your regular City Commission Meeting at seven PM. That's all I have.
Um, Commissioner Otman, before we adjourn?
Yes. Thank you. Sorry if this was, um, an afterthought. Um, City Manager, did, did we say that about coming back to the meetings in person full-time? Does that need to be an item for discussion or is that something? Does that need to be an item for discussion or is that something we, we could just agree upon now?
Um, it, it, it's up to you. I, I, I say January based to our conversation, but I know that there's also some options that you and I, uh, discussed that are, that I think are very, very good options. Um, so.
Let's put it up for, I know what you're talking about. So let's put it on for the next meeting for, um, discussion and possible action. So, uh, we can adjourn for tonight, uh, and discuss it with, um, with the, uh, the board, uh, next time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. What, what happened? Someone said something? No. Hit it. Let's go, let's go. You all have a great Halloween, um, meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.